Good morning. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to the Marshall County Board of Supervisors as we are meeting in regular session on this Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, nine AM, in the courthouse meeting room, northeast corner, third floor, with all three members present. I would invite you now to rise and please join us in our pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issues and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for a discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate, and a roll call vote will follow. First item is the approval or amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
I second it.
We got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda, first item is the approval of the minutes from regular session of March ten, two thousand and fifteen. Item number three, accept annual manure management plan update from Tri Oak Foods Incorporated, Marco Park LP ID number six-one-zero-one-six. Annual update report received and placed on file with the following changes: updated soil tests and P-index. Item number four, accept annual manure management plan update from McDonald Hog LLC, Banger Finishers, ID number five-nine-zero-three-four. Annual update report received and placed on file with no changes. Item five, accept annual manure management plan update, Wes and Steve Kicks, Wes Venture Farms, Finisher Farm, ID number six-three-six-oh-five. Annual update report received and placed on file with the following changes: change my crop rotation of optimum yields, manure analysis for determining application rates when applying manure. Item number six, approve mobile ban shell rental agreement. Ban shell rental agreement has been received from Midnight Ballroom requesting to be, to use the mobile ban shell Saturday, April four, two thousand and fifteen, for entertainment held at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds. Item number seven, approve the claims as audited and authorize the county auditor and recorder to issue payment of same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with all claims paid for the month of March. The March list of claims will be part of the first meeting in April. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
I will second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have one question. I know we were waiting on a check for the ban shell. Did we receive that?
We received the check plus the proof of insurance, and everything is okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. I would, I would ask you to refer roll call vote. I forgot my words.
Sorry to, sorry to throw wrench in the monkey words there.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number eight, and it is kind of an extensive list of our personnel actions. The first one is to hire Katie Cope, Conservation Board, seasonal temporary at nine fifty an hour, effective May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, with no later than, through no later than August twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. I entertain a motion on this one.
I motion that we approve this personnel hire.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question to Mike. Mike, did we have one or two part-time individuals last year that we brought in for seasonal help in conservation?
We have had two for the last three years.
Okay.
This will be the fourth year we've had two.
We're doing the exact same. Okay.
All right, a motion and a second. Discussion, roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And the second one on that one is to hire Nick Aaron's, Conservation Board, seasonal temporary at nine fifty an hour, effective May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, through no later than August twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen. I entertain a motion.
I move we approve the personnel hire of Nick Aaron's for the Conservation Board, seasonal temporary at nine fifty an hour, effective May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, no later than August twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen.
I will second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Mike, you want to, you want to just talk a little bit on this? I know we, a couple, three years ago, we went this, and you always like to be here when we do this, and I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. And we've done this a couple, three, started this a couple, three years ago to kind of help the, the labor side of things, the man-hours on your total board.
Yeah, it's been a come and go through the years. We fluctuated as budgets allow. I actually started with Marshall County as a seasonal in nineteen ninety-three, so it's no stranger to, to the work process. But again, after an absence for a couple of years of seasonal hires, again, because of budgetary constraints, we've been now allowed to hire two seasonals, and this will be the fourth year in a row that we've done that. It's been a tremendous help for the full-time staff, allowing them to attend to more, what do I say, detailed or conservation-type activities, duties, opposed to the seasonal maintenance activities of policing the parks, for mowing, trash pickup, things like that that we just, again, it's, they're not glamorous duties by any means, but they need to be done, and it saves our full-time staff by having the seasonal help, as well as assisting them with construction projects that we do in-house. Fence building, we have, this summer, we have in line to construct a new hay storage facility for the bison in Greencastle, additional work on, on the lake at Greencastle, and then also the new playscape that we're constructing at, at the Grimes Farm. We hope to break ground on that July first, and they'll assist, again, full-time staff with that.
Can you use this as a, as a pool for employment if, say, we have a, have a personnel change or something out there? I mean, can these people eventually, would have they eventually, like you say, you started in ninety-three, worked your way up? It's kind of, it's kind of, at least you know who's out there that's interested in conservation.
It is, and that seems to be the standard across the, the state with not only the county Conservation Boards, but the Department of Natural Resources. They hire people wanting to get into the field, they're, they're enrolled in, in school to, to get into the natural resource management field. So yes, this is a, it helps build their resumes, it helps us, and then it'll eventually weed out those that, that don't want to be in the field, and those that do want to be in the field, again, will, will build their resumes to the point where it's, it's a difficult selection when you do have a full-time position open.
Sure, all right, all right. Anything else for Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we had a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, item C, under number eight, we got a change of status and change of rate of pay, Lisa Smith. Change of status from auditor recorder assistant in the auditor recorder's office to administrative assistant in Marshall County Engineers Office, full-time change. Rate of pay from fifteen fifty-four to probationary wages seventeen ninety-five, this will be effective April one. I guess I'm gonna have Paul, you want to comment on this a little bit, on this change of status?
This is a, just a change of status for Lisa Smith that we are, we are filling an upcoming retirement in our office, that it's gonna happen on April thirtieth, so we'll have about a month where we can, where Sheila can train the, train Lisa, and it won't get us to where she's trained up on everything, but just kind of her regular month, it'll, it'll be a big help to have, have a month where they can, you know, learn from, from the predecessor, so.
So basically, we're not adding a position, we're just filling.
It's, it's filling an upcoming vacancy.
Upcoming vacancy, okay.
Can you tell me the wage of the person that you're, that she'll be replacing eventually?
I, no, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
And if we could get that, we'd like to know.
Okay, sure thing.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion.
I motion that we approve the personnel hire of Lisa Smith at a rate of pay of fifteen fifty-four an hour to probationary wages seventeen ninety-five an hour, effective April first, two thousand and fifteen.
I would have seconded that.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And moving on to item number D, or letter D, change of rate of pay, Jill Tompkins, full-time change rate from pay from eighteen twenty-one an hour to eighteen fifty-one an hour, effective March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. And again, is that just off the probationary period?
Yeah, and this is a few months overdue, but in, in looking at our, at our, you know, wages and where we're at, I realize that Jill was still on her probationary wage, so I, I probably have a few months behind on getting this done, but I just want to get her upgraded from the probationary.
So she, is that, is that, is that the scale that she will come off of, or be involved with now is eighteen fifty-one?
Yeah, and it's not really set by a scale.
Okay. That's just, that's just, that's just the wage for that position?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion on this.
I would move that we change the rate of pay for Jill Tompkins, full-time change rate of pay from eighteen twenty-one per hour to eighteen fifty-one per hour, effective March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number C, E, thank, thank you, Paul. Hire of Brandon Lenhaman, Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Deputy Full-Time, for a yearly total of forty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and forty-nine cents. This will be effective on April twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
I would motion that we approve the hiring of Brandon Lenahan, Sheriff's Office Deputy Full-Time, forty-four thousand, two twelve, forty-nine a year, effective April twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
I would second it.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to point out that this now brings Ted's staffing level to one hundred percent, back to where he was after all the preceding retirements that occurred last year. This, this is not an additional among the staff, this is a replacement for, for retirements that have occurred.
I thought we was two, still two down.
Nope.
This was the third, one of three.
We, we had three last year that retired, and we've had three new hires.
All right, we got a motion and a second, followed by discussion. Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving into letter F, hire from the auditor and recorder assistant in the auditor and recorder's office, full-time at fourteen fifty an hour, effective on or after March thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. And Deanna, I'll just let you explain that.
Actually, I'm gonna be hiring two. The first one for F, we'll say is Jessica Chezek. She'll be joining our office April sixth, and I think she's gonna be a great asset to our team, with the lovely Engineers Office taking one of our people, we need two.
Now, 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 good, now, good.
Are we gonna have to separate you two?
No, 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 we're, we're good.
In this corner?
We're good. No, we're basically just replacing a couple of people that, what he is taking, replacing that person for this.
For this position?
Yes, yep.
All right, I would, I would call for a motion.
I would move that we, that we approve the hire of Jessica Chezek for auditor recorder assistant, full-time at fourteen fifty per hour, effective on or before March thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen.
I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, and then we'll move on to hire, the next hire in items G, auditor recorder assistant, auditor recorder's office, full-time at fourteen fifty an hour, effective on or after March thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen. And again, I'll turn to you, Deanna.
This is actually, since I've been moving people around in our office, he's actually gonna be taking over a position that's moving over to our south side. And he, his name is Blazewar, and he'll be a great asset to our team as well. With this and looking over currently what we're doing in our office, we're about almost twenty-four dollars per hour less than what we have been, and plus benefits, we're down one person still, so.
You're still down to one person?
We're still down one person, yep. We're just kind of taking a look and seeing, once we move everybody around with the new hires, and get everybody up to speed, to see what's gonna go on in our office, and see what we need to still do, so.
I know you've done a lot of analysis. Do you think you're gonna be able to remain one person down?
You know, there's a good possibility. You know, there's, I, with the wages and stuff, I'm kind of looking at some other ways to maybe bump some of us all up, or some of them up, just so I'm more competitive with other offices and stuff, to keep the, my people in, so.
I don't think you're gonna be real popular at the next department head meeting, Paul.
I'm used to that feeling.
No, Paul and I have already spoke. We're, we're good.
Oh, okay, well.
We're good, we're good. But I just wanna, you know, voice that. I, I need to, you know, make it so I don't lose all of my people, so, to either other departments or other things, and, you know, I want my best team, so.
Good.
As long as we stay competitive with our total compensation package.
Yes.
And not just wage, we need to be cognizant that we are a phenomenal employer in Marshall County with our wage and benefit package. We are extremely competitive. Let's not get too carried away.
I think she, I think she's got a pretty definite direction she wants to go.
But I wouldn't feel good if I didn't say it.
This was a pick, no. I would entertain a motion.
I will move that we approve the hiring of the auditor recorder assistant, recorder's office, full-time at fourteen fifty an hour, effective on or after March thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen, of Blaze War.
I'd second it.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
And moving on to item number nine, this is a child abuse proclamation. Of course, April, the month of April is Child Abuse Month in our, in our community, and it's, it's always kind of a, one of those things where this has kind of been a standing program that we do honor, the Child Abuse Prevention Month, Proclamation Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero-zero-one-seven. Whereas Iowa's children are one of the most precious resources in our state and provide the hope for a brighter tomorrow in Iowa. Whereas two hundred and twenty-three Marshall County children were confirmed to be victims of child abuse in two thousand and thirteen. Whereas effects of child abuse are felt by entire communities, and preventing this tragedy depends on involvement and people throughout the community. Whereas effective child abuse prevention succeeds because of partnerships created between parents, practitioners, school, faith communities, healthcare organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas all citizens need to be, to be more aware of child abuse and neglect and its prevention within the community, and be involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing society. Now therefore, we in the Marshall County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Marshall County, Iowa, and urge all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. This dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors, and I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
I would move to adopt Resolution Number two-oh-one-five and dash zero-zero-one-seven, Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving to item number ten, Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero-zero-one-eight. This is the two thousand and fifteen Marshall County Noxious Weed Control Plan, Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero-zero-one-eight. And, and again, this resolution goes on, but there's, there's some interesting things, and I'll read what I feel, and Dave and Bill, if you can just jump in there and stop me. But people, persons that are interested, interested in working for the weed commissioner on a contract basis to mow, mow weeds should have submitted a bid on an hourly basis, along with information on equipment available and references to the weed commissioner here in the courthouse. Marshall County will conduct a roadside weed management spraying program again this year. The spot, county will spot broadcast for thistles, wild carrot, wild mustard specifically, and other noxious weeds found in high concentrations generally in the road sides and areas in the county ownership, over eight townships in the east half of the county in mid to late May and early June. Any person seeking to have their land exempted from the county spray program, and again, exempted from the county spray program, may ask the county to skip their property. This requires a proper description with the county which will be placed on the county do-not-spray map. This also requires placement of the county do-not-spray play, place cards at each end of the area not to be sprayed. This is a fee of ten dollars per area requested to not be sprayed. Be it further resolved that the two thousand and fifteen Noxious Weed Control Program shall be effective upon its adoption by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors.
I would motion that we adopt Resolution Number two thousand and fifteen dash zero-zero-one-eight, which is the two thousand and fifteen Marshall County Noxious Weed Control Program.
I would second it.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just like to make a comment every year that it is only the county that does spraying. The state of Iowa does not do spraying, so as people are driving up and down the roads and they're on a state road, and they see the noxious weeds, please don't call and complain to the Board of Supervisors. The state does not do spraying, but the county does. That's fine.
And then I, again, I just, I think we need to make, make notice that you cannot put up your own do-not-spray.
Correct.
Signs, even though, you know, you're not supposed to, just not, you just can't do it, and you need to come in, get on a do-not, do-not-spray map, and then that will, you know, eliminate you from being, your weeds being sprayed, and you worry about, or what you're saying.
I got a question.
Please, excuse me, I didn't mean to box you, man.
You might steal our secretary, you never know.
If, if we find noxious weeds in the state right away, is it still our county weed commissioner's duty to inform the state that they have a noxious weed on their property?
That's a good question.
Because I think down in Jasper County, we did have to do that quite a bit, and we had to inform the DOT that you must remove these weeds.
Did the DOT ever come out and comply with a request coming from the county?
I think they did, but I don't, I think it's because the weed commissioner wouldn't leave them alone.
You know, we want, we're gonna have an department update next Tuesday.
I was just curious.
You know, that's.
Could be a very good question. Why don't you be there for that?
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. Actually, come up with a good question.
That's a, that's a dandy.
All right, we got a motion and a second, followed by discussion. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number eleven, Marshall County Actorial Services, discussion and action on an actorial service agreement by and between Silverstone Group, Inc., and Marshall County, continuing through December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, for compliance and government accounting standards, Board G A S B Statement forty-five. And I'll let you describe, I'll let, since I've, I've gotta read a lot more, and I've gotta talk, so you talk. I want to hear you, Thompson.
Okay. This, this is a contract which, with an actuarial service that does all the monitoring and reporting to the government based upon our employees for the Affordable Care Act. This, this is another one of those unintended consequences that come up from, from federal legislation. It is so doggone complex and time-consuming that it is easier for us to hire a, an individual firm to do this rather than to handle it in-house. The amount of training that would have to go through and time, we just simply can't afford to do it in-house, so it is, it's the most prudent form of what we do is to, to farm this out. This is just one of the things that are coming down the road from the Affordable Care Act. There will be many more in the future that are equally as expensive for the county to enforce.
Can this just up, re-upping a program we've been, we've had anyway?
Yes.
With them, so it's nothing new.
We hired them, hired them last year.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion on this object.
That being said, I would motion that we approve the agreement between Marshall County and the Silverstone Group for actuarial services.
I would second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving to item number twelve, this is a purchase agreement for Wigan Property. Discussion and possible action on a purchase agreement between James and Jody Wigan, herein designated as seller, and Marshall County, Iowa, herein designated as buyer, acting pursuant to the terms of the grant agreement with the Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Division in administering its voluntary property acquisition project, does hereby offer to buy all the seller's right, title, and interest in the personal property known as a home located at the following legal description, real estate, real estate. Lot one A and west one-half of lot two A in the subdivision of the northeast corner of the northwest quarter, and the subdivision of the east one-fourth of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section twenty-four, township eighty-four, range eighteen west of the fifth PM, Marshall County, Iowa. Again, this, this is the ongoing agreement, another, another step, we've got another step after this, another step in the purchase of the FEMA and the county on this agreement with the Wigan property, so I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the agreement between James and Jody Wigan in Marshall County, pursuant to the terms of the grant agreement with Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Division in administering its voluntary property acquisition project to buy all the seller's right, title, and interest in the personal property in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirteen cents.
I would second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is my office on the auditor's side gonna be getting a document in regards to that? Do we have someone doing a quitclaim deed or anything, or aren't we at that point yet?
Let's get Marty to answer that.
The answer guy.
And then I've got a couple of questions, too, that have come from the public.
I guess the deed won't be available until about June fifteenth.
Okay.
For this property, so that's the estimated closing date for the property.
Is that, is that the end of the ninety days at when it's not, okay.
Yeah, I guess that's the date the, kind of homeowner's chosen to relocate some of the remaining contents from the property, so I guess Paul Peglow here in town's handling the closing, so he'll be the one working on the deeds.
Okay.
Okay, this is, this is for item twelve, but we also have item thirteen coming up on our agenda, which is the contract for demolition. I've had a couple people out in the county ask on any salvage rights, not only for the Wiggins, but if there's something in there that's going to be demolished that they do not want, that somebody is interested in, are they able to acquire that? And the specific thing I was asked for was their septic system.
I guess the, I guess until we close on the property, it's really between the, the property owner and anybody that they would have salvage rights with. I guess once the county acquires the property, then, I guess, then it becomes your property, and I guess until, you know, I guess we get to the demolition phase.
Because very often, sometimes in the demolition contracts, the person that's doing the demolition has right of salvage.
Right, and I, I guess I know on past projects that we've done, I guess there's almost a free-for-all, once, I guess, the local government acquires a property like this, and people go in the day-to-night and weekends and strip out materials, so I guess I will, that may happen here. I guess we're not able to control that, so.
Well, the first thing is for the purchase agreement for the Wigan property.
Yep, let's, let's, we've got a first, we've got a motion and a second on that. I don't, we're gonna take our role on that, and then get into the question on the other one.
All right, I roll call, please.
Graybenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, now I'll move to item twelve. It's Rickon Tiling, Inc., Contract with Marshall County, Iowa for Demolition of Wigan Property. Uh, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Following Agreement. This agreement entered on, into this twenty-fourth day of March, twenty fifteen, is by and between the county of Marshall, Iowa, uh, herein called the county, and Rickon Tiling, Inc., herein after called the contractor. Uh, and I guess going down to the bottom line on this, uh, they were the, they were the bidders on this, and the total was not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred. Uh, and is there anything, um, I guess it, maybe this goes into that, in that discussion.
Yes.
Um, because, but basically, it, it's saying, uh, that the contractor will furnish all the tools, the contractor require maintaining a valid certificate of liability, um.
But I just noticed the contract doesn't have anything in it that I've seen here that would have to do with salvage.
It says a payment should, uh, such payment should be for full compensation for demolition, removal, work, including basement foundation for debris disposal, uh, for furnishing and placing, uh, backfill for the site for all permits. All furnishes, furnishing and all material are to complete, complete work and record and in accord. Well, there again, I guess in his, in his demolition, if it's so decided that he would want to sell the septic system, I, I would say the demolition is his, his, going to be his property at that, at that point, wouldn't it?
Right, right. Whatever's left, uh, again, when the county takes control of it will be in essence, uh, you know, the.
Because like, like Dave, I've had.
Company of the demolition contractor.
I've had calls, uh, on wanting to, uh, keep somebody one of the garage.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I know once it gets into FEMA's hands and the county's hands, it cannot be used as proper.
Right.
Property again, um, but can other stuff be moved off? I mean, I don't know. How do we, how do we find that out, I guess?
Yeah, again, if people want to salvage, uh, materials off of it, then, again, that's permissible, obviously, up until that closing date, it's the Wigan's property, and after the closing date, it's really.
Our property.
Your property.
Well, with the.
Close the demolition contractor, so, and again, that's really the, how these things work. Well, I think based on that, I'm going to recommend that this person that has an interest in the, the septic to contact the Wiggins, and they, if they handle that before it passes from the Wiggins to the county.
Well, don't it have to go through Rickon?
No.
No, not, not before, because he's on, he's on the, he's the demolition, in charge of demolition, so it's his property, isn't it?
No.
Not, not until after June.
Yeah, right, until we close on the property, and again, that's estimated at June fifteenth, so.
Okay. So then are you suggesting that Wiggins go ahead and at least, if this person wants to contact them?
I think that's what I'll have.
They would, they would buy or purchase, same way with the garage.
Right.
The guy would, needs to get a hold of Wiggins.
Yep, until it, until it gets into our hands.
Okay.
Then, then I'm going to recommend that the, the person contact the Wiggins. And I know they've had phone calls and contacts.
Sure, because I could say they can almost take the copper out of the, out of, of, they can strip it themselves for a Rickon gets it.
Sure.
I mean, that's.
Yep.
What could happen?
Would that change the scope of work after, if there's like different buildings and less buildings, is that going to, not to exceed the fourteen-nine?
No, it's still, it's still demolition of the total property.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can't start the demolition until closing. You've got time to delay the Rickon agreement anyway, because you can't start until after closing anyway.
Right.
So if you needed to clarify anything on that agreement, you've got several meetings that you could actually make that happen.
So Rickon can't start with his bid of not exceeding fourteen-nine until it gets, it becomes our property?
Right.
And then he's got that, and that's when the ninety days would start?
Uh, ninety days starts, uh, whenever the county takes ownership, so again, if that's June fifteenth, then you have to get it down.
See, I thought this all had to be done by April or May. It doesn't, okay. Well, let's, okay, let's just go, let's get, let this, let this, get this motion taken care of.
I'm comfortable adopting this, uh, today and, and letting.
Okay, I think we have to do that, keep things moving.
Yeah, let the other people, let, let the Wiggins and the other, uh, parties work it out amongst themselves until we take possession. Uh, that being said, I would, I would, uh, motion that we adopt Resolution Number twenty fifteen dash zero zero one nine, an agreement between the Marshall County, Iowa, and Rickon, Rickon Tiling Incorporated to perform the duties involved in the demolition of a property located at twenty-seven twenty-two Garwin Road in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
I would second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to Resolution twenty fifteen dash zero zero two zero, this mitigation model deed restriction in her, in reference to the property or properties conveyed by the deed between Jody L., or James L. and Jody Wigan, property owner, participating in the federal, federally assisted acquisition of project, the grantor and the Marshall County, Iowa, the grantee is, is its successors and, uh, assigns. And again, um, looking at, looking at, uh, this, this, uh, program, as I got my pages, and there's about, uh, four pages in this, uh, basically what this, uh, mitigation deed restriction says and, and what it defines is the terms, uh, the compatible uses, structures, and maybe that would be in there, Dave, no new structure improvements shall be, okay, this is what they're telling us that we can do with the property after Marshall County, uh, is, is the owner of that said property, which is, as Marty was saying back, probably in June. Um, what it can do far as disaster assistance, flood insurance, transfers, uh, inspections, monitoring, and reporting, enforcement, then the state will notify the grantee and any other holder of the property interest in writing and advise them that they have sixty days to correct the violation if there are any violations that do erupt. Again, this is pretty well explained out, and also, uh, we've got the Wigan, um, budget worksheet, and on that worksheet, uh, again, it is online, if you'd like to, if you're, if you're viewing on the web, uh, it is online, and, um, it will break down the, uh, the cost, appraised value. Um, it may look a little confusing, but I, but I think the bottom line that we are conscious of, uh, we're looking at eight thousand nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents would be our share of the cost of, um, doing this. And am I right, Marty? I mean, I know, I know it was, there's been a few different budget lines and looking at county shares, FEMA shares, Wigan's share.
Well, again, there's several, uh, amounts on the spreadsheet. I guess the acquisition amount, again, is the fifty-five, two twenty-one thirteen. The, uh, Wiggins should also be eligible for an additional relocation assistance amount, and that will probably net out to be eighteen thousand nine fifty-eight twelve. So the county, uh, money, I guess the county, uh.
Responsibility.
Per year earlier resolution was to cover seven point five percent of the, of the match, so your county money would be forty-four seventy-seven thirty-nine plus the thirty-five forty-one eighty-seven.
Which totals the eight nineteen twenty-six.
Okay.
So that, there again, that just to keep everybody aware of what.
It'd be at the most that. It could possibly be slightly less because our contract with Rick, Rickon to, for demolition is not to exceed fourteen-nine. That doesn't mean that it can't come in under that.
Right, right.
So if it did come in under that, the final bill, our total amount, outlet could be slightly less. Could be. I guess, yeah, again, the bid from Rickon is a lump sum bid, so again.
Sure.
Then, then, then that's the number. Uh, I do want to point out, under compatible uses in this, because these are some of the other questions we've had from the public, is will this property be for sale and what has to happen to it after the Wiggins are out of there, the federal government has stepped in and does the relocation program, and the county owns it. Under compatible uses, the property shall be dedicated and maintained in perpetuity as open states, open space for the conservation of natural floodplain functions. Such uses may include parks for outdoor recreational activities, wetland management, nature reserves, cultivation, grazing, camping, except where adequate warning time is not available to allow for active evacuation, unimproved unpaved parking lots, buffer zones, and other uses consistent with FEMA guidance for open space acquisition. Hazard mitigation assistance requires, requirements for property acquisition and relocation for open space. We will not be able to sell this property in the future. It remains under Marshall County's ownership, and it will not be built upon.
And there again, underneath it on structures, no new structures or improvements shall be erected, so then we, we cannot, the gentleman that would like to buy that property.
Cannot do it.
Can we give it to him?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
It may, it needs to remain.
So if you're listening, you, you heard, you got your answer.
Yep, floodplains, yep. We got it.
You know, okay, who, who, uh, who, uh, do we mow it? So we're occurring expenses on that property.
Well, uh, we could graze cattle or sheep on it.
And we have.
That's about it.
Well, you could, you can go camping there on the weekends, Danny.
As long as the river wasn't coming out.
As long as you got, you can evacuate.
But it must remain a green space.
Okay, anything else? Marty, anything we need to, again, it, it's, it touches a lot of different items, which is still vague on a lot of, a lot of different items, but it worked. All right, um, I would, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
I move we adopt Resolution twenty fifteen dash zero zero two zero, mitigation model deed restriction.
I will second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any, any other discussion?
Other than the fact it's always fun to deal with the federal government, no.
I don't think we're done dealing.
No.
I, I, I actually enjoy the, the discussion that we're having on this because it's complicated to us, and we're able, and, you know, bring Marty in to kind of keep, keep the.
Somewhat unconfused.
Unconfused.
Yeah, yeah, true.
All right, you got a motion and a second? I would entertain a motion.
There is a couple of blanks within the, the document. Is that something that's going to be put in?
Yes.
At a later time?
That one is, uh, every three years, and I'm sure that's just kind of the, a date when we were, the grantee, uh, in accordance with other current, it says, successors and interests, shall submit to the state a report certifying that the guarant, guarant, grantee has inspected the properties in the months preceding the report. And I guess that is just to make sure that we are not building any property on that.
Mm-hmm.
And do anything out of the ordinary.
Okay.
I've seen that, too. Roll call, please.
All righty, Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, item number fifteen, this is a time set aside for public to make comments on topics of county business. Other than those listed on the agenda, there will actually be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. The floor is open. Anybody got any comments?
I got a question on the, on the Rickon agreement, and this isn't the instrument that you guys were assigned and sending back to Rickon, but is there anything on there that indicates, uh, them getting a notice to proceed from you? I mean, I guess sort of.
This, I think this is just a, this is just the, the form of events.
And I'm not saying it would happen, but I'm not reading anything here that.
Right.
Meaning that Rickon couldn't go out this afternoon and start banging on this house in this document right here, but I didn't know if there's something else that requires Rickon to.
Until.
Get notice from you to start.
Until it is out of the possession of the Wiggins, they can't do anything.
But it's not in here, and this, it doesn't say it's in here. That's why I was wondering if the actual instrument.
To proceed.
Okay, that's why I was just wondering, if there's something that holds them back until that actually closes.
Let's do their property until it actually closes.
Right, but I just wasn't reading it in, in the, on this.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
So I was just worried that, you know, anyway, I assumed that it was in the actual.
I see, okay.
Thanks, Marty.
Anything, anything else? Well, hearing nothing else, I'd just like to let everybody know this is a very important day in history. Back in eighteen seventy-four, Harry Houdini was born, and one of the greatest musicians, uh, ever, and, and I was going to try magic act, but I guess I won't. All I will do is say that, uh, we are, we will now stand adjourned. The next regular session is April seventh, twenty fifteen, at nine AM. All business to be acted upon at that session shall be submitted to the county auditors and recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Thursday, April second, twenty fifteen, at one PM. There be no further business to come before the board. Our meeting is adjourned at nine forty-three. Thank you.